Now, go on to the main part of the agenda. I'm advised that one of the advisers for one of the other items on the non-public agenda may be here shortly and we may want to adjust the agenda again to cope with that. But we'll just plough on in the meantime and see what we can get done. So, on item six, confirmation of minutes, I'll move for the Chair that the ordinary council meeting minutes of the 15th of November been confirmed. Seconded, councillor Staines, any discussion? I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carry. On to the minutes of the community boards. Waikatoaiti Coast Community Board, councillor O'Malley.
I move that the council notes the minutes of the inaugural Waikatoaiti Coast Community Board meeting held on 26th of October 2016.
And seconded, councillor Wilson, any discussion? I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carry. And also councillor O'Malley, the same community board but the 9th of November.
Good. I move that the council notes the minutes of the Waikatoaiti Community Coast Community Board meeting held on the 9th of November 2016.
Seconded, councillor Wilson, I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carry. Otaka Peninsula Community Board, 27th of October. We might do these in pairs, I think, and the 10th of November. Would you like to do them both then?
I've got to be careful, I didn't say Saddle Hill here. But anyway, council notes the minutes of the inaugural Otaka Peninsula Community Board meeting held on 27th of October 2016 and also notes the minutes of the Otaka Peninsula Community Board held on the 10th of November 2016.
Seconded, councillor Hall. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carry. Strath Tyrie Community Board, 27th of October, 10th of November, councillor Gary.
I move that council notes the minutes of the inaugural Strath Tyrie Community Board meeting held on the 27th of October 2016 and that council notes the minutes of the Strath Tyrie Community Board meeting held on the 10th of November 2016.
Seconded, councillor Wilson, any discussion? I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carry. Moskill Tyrie Community Board, 22nd of October and the 22nd of November, councillor Ollie.
I move that the council notes the minutes of the inaugural meeting held on the 26th of October and the subsequent meeting held on the 22nd of November of the Moskill Tyrie Community Board.
Seconding, discussion? I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carry. West Harbour Community Board, minutes of the 22nd of October, 26th of October and the 16th of November, councillor Hall.
Thank you, Your Worship. I move that council note the minutes of the West Harbour Community Board meeting on the 26th of October and further notes the minutes of the West Harbour Community Board meeting on the 16th of November 2016.
Seconded, councillor Fiso, discussion? I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carry. And finally, the Saddle Hill Community Board, minutes of the 27th of October and the 17th of November, councillor Steadman.
Thank you. I move that the council notes the minutes of the inaugural Saddle Hill Community Board meeting held on 27 October 2016 and the subsequent meeting on 17 November 2016.
And seconded, councillor Elder, thank you. Discussion? Put it, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carry. Right, on to the reports. Item 19, temporary alcohol restriction for ORC. Now, this being in mind, before we get to the technical restrictions and follow-up evidence, I just reminded me that when I talked about the declarations of interest before I asked, you should note, however, the recommendations go a little further than that. So if you go to page five, you'll see that required to note the convenience and confirm that the home management is under the definition. So if there are questions on that before I ask any of the councillors as well?
I'm happy to move that, but I did want to ask about it because the wording, for example, of my declaration is not what I wrote. There's nothing particularly concerning about it, but I'd like to know that we have the capacity to come back to staff to tidy up any minor irregularities prior to the next time this is published. I mean, it's a work in progress anyway, so on the understanding that such modification is easily affected.
Yeah, easily.
I'm happy to move. Thank you.
So, that's been moved, as a second, councillor Fiso, any discussion? I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carry. Thank you. Back to Waikatoaiti Community Board, restrictions and follow-up. Is there anything else?
The map that was attached to the original or to the report indicated the boundaries as being on the inside of the roads, which would exclude the roads, perimeter roads from being part of the look-a-band. I've circulated and amended, playing because the intention is for the roads to be part of that look-a-band.
Are there any questions? Would someone like to move?
Happy to move.
Take it down to Staines. Discussion? Do you wish to speak to councillor Wilson?
No.
Any further discussion? The government, all those who see the recommendation on page 111, I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
You are taking...
Can you hear me now? All right. We're proposing to lodge an appeal on the decision version of the RPS. The appeal that attached reflects broadly the same points that the council approved in terms of our submission on the RPS and our assessment about how well those original submission points have been addressed and how critical their non-addressment, I suppose, is for the council. And we're happy to answer any questions on the detail of the matters included in the appeal.
Happy to move.
Anna, it's a bit of a tough question, but do you think that the regional council didn't really listen to the original?
To be fair, we weren't the only submitter and I'm not sure of the exact content of the other submissions. Obviously, that panel have had to balance up the evidence that they heard and come to their own conclusions, so I can't pass any judgement on how well they did their job. I just think it's important that the council stays in the process, hopefully to resolve as much as we can through mediation and work, you know, effectively, continue to work effectively with the ORC on this policy.
It's been moved, as a second, seconded councillor Hall, any discussion? I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? The next item is a literature item concerning the County Council chair of the country. Since I am the Chair of that, I'll be standing down and having a chat with Staines at the back of the Chair.
Just let me get to the page. I can take it all down here, I'm just going to find the page first. Do you want to introduce the item?
This report is an update on the progress of the Cozy Homes Trust. It's establishment in 2015-16. The council had requested the update report last year's annual plan before we could release the $25,000 allocated under the rates allocation within community development. So we are seeking your approval to release the funding based on the information within the report.
Questions, councillors? Councillor Vandervass?
On page 156, table one, there seem to be some very high operational costs for the 15-16 year. Could you expand on why those costs seem to be so high and what exactly the operational costs include?
The operational costs predominantly include the salary for the project officer, which is under $60,000. And you note there's actually some funding there also for actual insulation, but that, so that's separate to, that's direct funding for insulation to suppliers, so that's not, it's gone, it goes through the Cozy Homes Trust, but it's not directly used for Cozy Homes Trust operations. Does that make sense?
And those operational costs are necessary in order to get that insulation put in?
Yes, I mean, well, the operational cost for the project officer, her primary role is about education and coordination and information. The value of that to the community is that there are many, many misconceptions among quite a number of residents in Dunedin about, A, what healthy home temperatures are, B, the kinds of schemes that people can access and also see the validity of some of those schemes. So the role in which the coordinate, the project officer plays is to provide information, education and coordinate many of the activities and the information around healthy home insulation within the city.
Thank you.
Councillor Hawkins?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Chairman. I just had a question around the home energy awareness training part of the work, because it, just because it's not specifically mentioned in the outputs to date. So I just wanted if we could get a, just get a sense of the scope of that activity and how that, and if we know how effective it is or how many people have been reached by that or anything really.
I can't tell you how many people have been reached by, with that information separate to the other information that we've received from the trust. So specifically, obviously, the trust looks at both education to people around efficiency and of energy and heating in homes and the wider issue of insulation, and quite often that's coupled together in information. I could request the information from the trust, whoever can provide that to you later.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Would someone be interested in moving? Thank you councillor Hall. Seconded councillor Wilson, any discussion? If not, I'll put it, all in favour?
Aye.
Against? Carry.
One more.
So, the purpose of this report is to request that funding come from the Consumer Electricity Fund to the Cozy Homes Trust. The request is made for $25,000 in this financial year and $20,000 in the following. It follows a $50,000 allocation from the consumer electricity fund last year to the trust, which was primarily for set-up. We absolutely understand that the Consumer Electricity Fund was established to support people who required additional financial assistance with electricity costs, and the fund does provide that funding, as you will see, there is a table within the report that tells you the allocations over the last five or so years. However, we believe that by funding the Cozy Homes work, it will add to the long-term sustainability around home insulation and that will impact on energy costs for residents.
Questions, councillors? Councillor Vandervass?
Is one of the reasons for reallocating the funding that the current funding wasn't effective or taken up?
I think the funding has been effective. It is, it is well-used within the city, as you can see, you know, nearly 700 people a year in the last couple of years, but it hasn't been fully utilized, and that could be because we are making, and this is an assumption, I have to say, but it could be that it is not fully utilized now because there has been an increase in home insulation. So we see this as an opportunity to do something sustainable. We have spoken with a number of the organizations that distribute the funds and whilst they would say, yes, we'd all like more money, they're not in disagreement if funding was allocated from the CEF to Cozy Homes.
So this change is funding neutral from our point of view, but more effective from yours?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
No other questions, councillors? Councillor Lord moves. Just on your second, any debate? If not, I'll put it, all in favour?
Aye.
Against? Carry.
Okay, I understand that the advisor for the item in non-public has arrived and we would go into that next, but since we've been going for two hours, we'll take a break anyway, that'll give the chance to, for the cameras to be, for the camera guys to go and the public to leave, so we'll take a 10-minute break. I'll move for the Chair that we do that. Seconded councillor Staines, and I'll also move that we move into non-public on our return. Seconded councillor Staines, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against?
Just to give us a refresher as to how we got here. Can you hear me? So, this, this policy work comes from the Aratui Porti Porti strategy, which we released and adopted last year, and as part of, as part of that document, there's an action plan with some key deliverables, and one of those is the creation of a public, public art framework through the Aratui consultation process, which was quite extensive and I was involved quite heavily in that. And some initial public engagement around this piece of work, we were made very aware by the public that there were two areas that this, this piece of work really needed to cover. One was a kind of a visionary, ambitious position, you know, a strategy that we would take as a city around, around being ambitious and visionary, and the public also told us that we needed to be, we needed to have some very robust practical considerations in place in terms of, in terms of, you know, delivering a, a good, a good program of public art. So, so from that, we've got really two major pieces of work. One is an independent, an independent report, which kind of covers, which covers a visionary piece of thinking, what's possible. It's a, it's a thought piece, it's a call to action, I think. That's the, the report, rethinking public art in Dunedin. It talks about what might be possible and I think gives the public a, a framework to work from. The second, the second piece of work is one that has been, has been put together by council officers, and it, I mean, it talks very much in the language of Aratui Porti about the vision for what we could do, which is very important, and really identifies, identifies some, some challenges that we face or that we have traditionally faced, that we would like to, that we would like to tackle and solve as part of, as part of this work. And there's an action plan, which we're promoting or proposing around the council being a leader, around the council helping to develop ideas and around the council being, being, leading the profile engagement of this kind of activity. One of, one of the first, when we're looking at, when we're looking at the first strand leadership and partnerships, we need to make some decisions about commissioning and, and we've identified really three options which we need, we need some decisions on. We need, so obviously, we could, we could do this in-house ourselves as council officers, elected representatives. We could form a, we could form a, an independent public trust, or we could, we could set up a commissioning panel, which could include, you know, a variety of membership. Really, in terms of, in terms of the rest of the document, talks a lot about practical guidelines, which is really the nuts and bolts of looking after a public art collection. So I think that's my few moments taken up.
Just a note, I really enjoyed really the report, thank you for that, and I'll say more about that later. I think we're very lucky to have those two authors. The, the thing that I'm troubled by though is how long this has had already taken, and I understand the reasons for the delay to make the rational decision that's intended, but I'm wondering if it's necessary to have one or other of those options and not actually do the lot? I mean, I know how successful the trust model has been in Wellington, but it's not just the only provider of public art in Wellington. Work is commissioned as well, and so you're, you're not suggesting those options are necessarily mutually exclusive, are you?
No. To be honest with you, no, probably not.
So would it be possible, would it be possible and a productive path forward to have both the council commissioning, whatever it felt like, with whatever funds it can put its hands on or think appropriate, in addition to chasing benevolent sponsors and supporters of individual works in particular places, as well as a trust of some kind that was expected to go out and fundraise, as Wellington does, and make a big contribution to public art in the city?
Yes, that's, that's entirely possible. I suppose we would just need to be really cognizant of, of, you know, decision-making process, you know. We talk a little bit in the practical considerations about, you know, the, you know, gifts, for example, and ensuring that we, you know, that we retain, you know, a sense of quality, you know, safeguard things like health and safety.
And it's in that area that I have the biggest concern about, a sort of, a trust out the side, which easily compromised, depending on membership and so on, could easily compromise those processes and those concerns.
Yeah, I mean, for a trust to be successful, it would have to work hand in glove with council officers on site selection, you know, the performance of the materials that the sculpture might be made out of, health and safety, future maintenance programs, and I think the Wellington, you know, the Wellington experience is that, is that happens, and we would need to have, you know, robust processes in place to ensure that, you know, whatever was selected, you know, met and fulfilled all those criteria.
Thank you.
Councillor Wilson?
Yes, done. I again share the views that this is exciting to see and it's been a long time coming, but I'm just intrigued with the, at two levels, the engagement plan, because you've got the advantages of it, and I get that, but the disadvantages which you've got done is nil, is that I actually think that there's a lot of people who want to see some action rather than be another consultation process, and have you got, I mean, you've got a fairly extensive consultation on the framework here, and I'm just wondering if, in the big picture where this is an action plan from the strategy, are we going to do that in every action? Are we going to do this level of consultation every time?
No, no, I think, and I'm sorry for Simon here, so this is from, from everybody, it's thought that given the nature of public art, that consulting on this, for an action plan in this area is appropriate, because it is, you know, regardless of whether you're putting in moulders or a haka picture, these are things that are in a high degree of public interest, so engaging the public is the staff recommendation because of the high degree of interest.
I appreciate that, but this isn't about the art per se and...
No, but it will feed into it.
Okay, that's fine. It just concerns me that we're also then having one for our back, that people are going to expect their reaction and to go through a similar consultation process.
No, I don't, well, I guess that's for us to manage, but that's a decision, there's an option not to consult on the framework, so.
Just to, maybe just to pick up, you know, my conversations as part of the Aratui consultation and the, and the initial, the initial, you know, public engagement around this, it is a, it's a, it's an area where people have passion and it's an area where people have opinions, and yeah, like Sandy said, we, we felt that it would be, yeah, probably a good move to go back out and just double-check that we've got this right.
Okay. I mean, in some ways, I think, although, and I understand your concerns, but I think we have had public art ever since the street art happened, and so my views are perhaps that we've matured slightly, but that's not a view that's obviously shared with some confidence.
On page 192, background, it says that there was no council-funded public art activity since 2011. I'm wondering who paid for the mural, murals that we've seen so many of, and how much did they cost?
They've been fundraised for by a large, so I can show you the one that I personally paid for, if you like. And so they've been fundraised for, out of my own money, not my own. They've been fundraised for by the Dunedin Street Art Collective. They haven't been paid for. There's no DCC public art fund, you remember, in the process of us taking all the new CapEx money, any new levels of service that all got taken out. I think this year is the first year it makes a reappearance.
Have you got a rough idea of what the total was? Because it seems to me that we got pretty amazing value.
You mean how much in total all of it was worth?
Yes.
Look, it's fairly variable depending on where they needed to bring the artist from. Some of the local artists, some got paid, some didn't.
Just the collective in total, do you know how much?
No, I'm sorry, I don't. And they're an independent art collective, they're not accountable to us, they don't tell us that.
Is there any way we could find out? Because to me...
We could certainly ask, but they have no obligation to tell us. So I will ask if you would like.
Just the quantum would be very interesting, just to see how much bang for buck they were able to provide. And perhaps that might feed into some areas or some ways of doing things which...
Street art, apparently, you can do it in a day. Generally sculptures aren't able to be done quite so well.
This is indicating a willingness to move, Amosh? As circulated.
I think public art is fantastic and the street art is showing us how much vitality it brings into the city. And one of the things about public art is really cool is that quite often people don't go to the public art gallery, and yet we all know art enhances our lives. So it creates an environment of curiosity, creativity and imagination, which is fantastic. And I was just wondering, I like the Wellington model because I've visited Wellington a number of times and I've seen how successful it is. Have you investigated the Melbourne model? Because Melbourne has some really fantastic art and sculpture, public sculpture?
Yes, we have. One of the ideas that we've drawn from Melbourne is with regard to engaging people as part of the creative process, which we would want to work, no matter which commissioning model we chose. You know, whereby we create what's called a public art lab. And we could host that in the art gallery, or it could be in the fringe office, or the library, anywhere really, where we can get people together and actually tease out ideas for, you know, potential public art sites, new commissions, new ideas. It's a very successful model in Melbourne.
Yes, it's fantastic. Melbourne's really, really well and Wellington's pretty much on the same train.
Cam, first of all, congratulations to you and the other staff that worked on this report. I was really excited by it. Fantastic to see. I'll talk more about my views as we get to the motion, but I just had a question, two questions I wanted to ask. The first one is, am I to understand that this is not a full-blown consultation? This is a touching base with the key stakeholders to make sure, you know, that you're on the right track. Is that correct or not?
Yeah, I mean, my understanding is that we want to go back out to the community to do exactly that. The key stakeholders, the people in the community that are really engaged in this, and they're, you know, there was a big number. You know, they came out of the woodwork and they'll come out again. They're very engaged in this process. And, you know, going back out to them, you know, is not necessarily a lengthy process, I don't think.
I think that's what I wanted to know for sure, because I think one of the other speakers touched on it, that now with the art strategy, it's around getting something done and implementation. I think you recognize that. Second question was, of the three models, the independent commissioning trust is the one that I see as being the most important because I worry that we might be caught up in the political process and artwork can be controversial. But I just noted the comment trustees may be hard to find. Do you have confidence that you would be able to find trustees here in Dunedin?
Yes, yes I do, you know, but it's a realistic concern.
Can I just, I wouldn't like to, I just received a quick text from somebody when I said that the street art was able to be put up in a day. So I really wouldn't like to, sorry, sorry. Whilst there are some inherent weaknesses in you not having to have people clambering over some things, the planning and things that goes in, I assume you don't want to undervalue what it has been extraordinary, so please don't take me wrong.
Yeah, thank you. And firstly, I'd like to congratulate Jin Jongbal and John McCormick for their paper, Rethinking Public Art in Dunedin. John McCormick, an out-of-town consultant, sure, but one with very strong links to this city and to this artistic community, which I think has been very helpful. And what I think is great about the paper is that it sets out an ambition of what public art could be in Dunedin. And part of that's about moving beyond, I mean, as great as murals and sculpture is, a key part of this for me is thinking about how we can broaden the scope of what public art could mean to include things around community engagement, community engagement and consultation, around broader conversations about social and environmental issues. And also to include conversations around what council's own above-ground infrastructure looks like. The last of these is pertinent. I'm generally wary of putting hard dates and resolutions like this. But I think concrete timeframes are useful. Eighteen months ago, we decided that we would commission a public art framework for the city that would be used to assess the capital budget that would be coming on stream for the 1617 financial year. It seems oh so distant at the time, but worse than that, four and a half years ago, not this council, not the previous council, but the one before that, committed to, by resolution of council, to including creative design elements in all of our above-ground infrastructure policy that is referred to in this paper, but still hasn't been developed fully, let alone implemented. I'm a realist though, so just an urgent update of that would be fine. There's been a fair amount of frustration in the community about the length of time that this has taken for various reasons. And I do hope that by putting some timelines around this goes some way to easing those. The creative offering of our city is integral to our brand, which is important from both visitor economy perspective and attracting business to the city. But also, perhaps more importantly, it's important from a social wellbeing perspective, from a quality of life perspective and for a sense of identity in this place for our local community. And we'll class public art as an essential part of that offering. And we've done not nearly enough in recent years to build on the legacy that we have inherited, both this institution and other institutions in the city that have contributed to that. In terms of delivering on the council's strategic framework, it obviously delivers strongly on Aratui or Teporti and in fact is an initial action of that. It delivers on our economic development strategy, on our social wellbeing strategy, the way that it broadens the conversation around public art to include temporary events, whether they're in parks or reserves or alleyways, speaks to our parks and recreation strategy and in the broader cultural conversations that this work can elicit. It speaks to our commitments to Teteriti or Waitangi and to sustain, the sustainability of our city, which is collectively a hugely important contribution to council strategic framework. I think, I mean, I know there is a risk of consultation fatigue. I certainly support for the political reasons inferred by staff, the value in touching base with the creative community around the framework. But I think this is bigger than that, in that the engagement around the framework through, whether it's through the public art lab or whatever, is more than a kind of drier, higher-level strategic thinking. But it does progress to a point where we get to talk about actual, physical, tangible ideas and what this might look like and look towards the implementation of some of that. E really is just an acknowledgement of the delay in the work programme that's got us to the point where we are now. And I would hate to see the budget that we had applied to, the budget that we had set aside for public art in this financial year to be swallowed up at the end of it because of that. So just getting in early to see that any unspent funds for this year are carried forward to next year. I'm a little uncomfortable based on the paper that we've got to commit to any kind of governance model. I think some work needs to be, further work needs to be done around that, particularly around the appointment mechanisms. So when that comes back, that paper in April of 2017, to allow us to make a choice between one or multiple governance arrangements, as well as signing off the public art framework, as well as by then having an update on where our creative above-ground infrastructure policy is at in terms of being operationalized. We still, would still allow us time to make some physical contribution in the public art realm before the end of this financial year. I'm nothing if not an optimist. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm very supportive of this because it meets my need for seeing how the progress is going to be made. Long overdue progress, but also the issues that, I sort of touched on those questions about making sensible decisions about the management structure. I think, I think I've always found it strange that in this city, international city of literature and home of poets and artists and various media of world renown, that we are bereft of, pretty bereft of public art funded by the city. At times when we have had a fund to provide such, it's been pretty conservative. And a lot of it has not been particularly imaginative and it has been resisted by the community for reasons in more recent times that we're aware of. I think I should pay tribute, in fact, we all should, to the university, who have, in the vacuum, filled our role in providing fantastic public art on the campus. Not just on the campus, on the side of the dental school, on other buildings around the medical campus. And for those of you to whom I didn't send the photos last week, in the new area on Union Street, there's $500,000 worth of superb Paul Dibble sculptures on the new paved area. And what classy paving it is too, by the way. So I would encourage you to go and have a look at that because that is an amazing contribution through that whole plaza area beside the leaf to one of the greatest small cities in the world. And I think we need to bite the bullet about this or whatever image you actually want to grasp because we haven't done enough and we haven't done enough for far too long. So I can put up with a year or two or three of delay about this. I'm very supportive of running it past the community because I think people will be really interested in the material in both the staff report and the consultant's report that has been alluded to. I think we're extraordinarily lucky to have John McCormick as one of the authors, given his knowledge of the city and his own intimacy with the art gallery. And for those of you who haven't read it all yet, I'm sure that's no one, there are issues in there in terms of the type of public art and the variety that are really quite instructive for people. My particular favourite is of course the crisis kitchen. And given the current developments in American foreign policy, there will be plenty more new menus on that invention, that initiative to come. But I think that's the key to it for me, is not only do we have the good fortune of some great recent initiatives, whether it's the steps outside the rises, the poems on the rises of the steps outside Harrow Street, or the wonderful street art that Dr Hazelton and his friends facilitated. But there's an amazing range of potential activities and types of work that's encompassed and traversed in that report. And I think it would be really useful for the wider dissemination in the community of those sorts of things so that people can understand the exciting nature of what we're talking about.
As I said earlier, I was extremely excited to read this report and compliment the authors. I think we're on the cusp of something really great here, which is going to add to the vitality and character of our city. And I was particularly encouraged to see one particular aspect in the report. And that was that the harbour side was mentioned, right around the harbour, not only the peninsula, but right round to Port Chalmers and the possibility of artwork encompassed and included in that development. And that was particularly exciting, as was the collaboration between different departments of council. And it's the urban designers speaking to the infrastructure people, the transportation operations, the park staff, the city of literature staff, as well as the arts advisors, that really excited me because that's what we need. Everyone's got at their individual jobs, but to collaborate on this is the most exciting aspect. So I will have no trouble whatsoever supporting it. I congratulate you again in the office of the report and let's get on with it.
So I think this is a really, a long-awaited step in the right direction in terms of, in terms of creating the, one of the world's great small cities that we aspire to. Because you can't, the late Richard Walls used to say that he didn't want Dunedin to be a museum of modern plumbing. And for years I didn't understand what he meant. And I think what he meant was, it's not all just about bloody drains and getting the road straight. It's about a bit of joy and a bit of colour and a bit of expression, cultural expression. Surprise and delight. That is what we, the feedback we get from people who visit our city now. So this is fantastic. And Hawken, would you like to exercise your writing reply?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to add how heartening it is to have such unanimous support for a public art programme around the council table. It's not a situation that our creative community have always enjoyed, that kind of political support. So it is, it is good to see. And I think it's exciting for me on two levels. Traditionally, it has been about looking at how we interact with our space and its impact on our built form. But what excites me about the thinking in this paper and in this framework is that it's moving, including that, but moving towards how we can use it to relate differently to each other in our, in our social interactions and our thinking. So I'm looking forward to seeing the fruits of this long gestation of propping up temporarily and more permanently around the city in the years to come. Thanks.
Okay, I'm going to put it. The recommendations are on page 192. All those in favour? I wasn't aware of that.
Too late now.
Is everyone happy for me to put it, uh, complete rather than going through? So I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye. Guest, carried. To item twenty-four, financial result. So would you like to preface any questions?
No, take it as read.
We'll take this one as read. Um, councillors' financial result. Any questions? There are none. Would someone like to move the recommendations? Move to councillor Stain, second to councillor Wilson. Any discussion? I'll put it to councillor Vandis.
I did just want to say that the, the financials all sort of pretty good. Uh, but we do have the thirty million dollar power pole issue. We have a lot of drainage stuff yet still to be done. And I'm wondering, is any of that factored into all those tables that we have there?
This is the financial results at a point in time. So obviously it doesn't, it's not a forecast. So obviously part of the annual plan and then obviously we're about to move into a long-term, long-term plan process. That's where I think we need to address those issues. Come here.
If there's no other discussion, I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye. Carried. The next one is item twenty-five, the Waipuri Fund. Are there any questions on that? Two one nine. Any questions?
Gavin, it's just, um, the returns seem to be constrained by the fact that we've got a very conservative portfolio at the moment. And I know that just a few months ago, that was recommended that we make some of those changes. Are you happy with that or is it just what you expect?
Any other questions? Would someone like to move the recommendation? Move councillor Wilson, second to councillor Gary. Any discussion? I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye. Guest, carried. Thank you. Move on to the appointments of members to the Taga Museum Trust Board. Put it to both. Move councillor Lord, second to councillor Wiley. Are there any questions first? I've got that. Questions to councillor Vandis?
Why is it that when you were looking for another member for this board, that my interest in it wasn't acknowledged? I mean, you talk about getting somebody else that has scientific background. I've done maths, ed-maths, acoustics and physics at university level. Expressed an interest in being on the Taga Museum Trust and was disappointed that you're now looking for somebody else. It seemed to be a man short. I thought I should be it.
Well, I think that we're, we're conscious of the fact that the skill sets needed for the board, we've got, took advice from the museum board, it's just the skill sets they need and they need them broader than councillor, um, representation. There's also a consciousness that, in the broader sense, that we might move away in the long run from councillor representation on there at all because it will be a matter of skill sets and they're looking for specific ones.
Well, if that's the case, why then exactly the same councillors that you've had before?
Because it would be, uh, there'd be no continuity if we, uh, if we just transitioned immediately to a new, a completely new senate.
With respect, your worship, you can't have it both ways. You can't have both continuity and get these new skill sets that you need.
Yes, you can if you do it just one at a time. That's what I've said. I've answered your question. Are there any other questions? Would someone like to move? Councillor Lord, second to councillor Wiley, is there any discussion?
Yes. The, the appointment process the mayor has undertaken this triennium is one that has been extremely disappointing to me personally. I have experience on council since two thousand and four. I have the confidence of more voters by far than any other councillor around this table. And yet the mayor chooses to deny me any of the positions for which I have requested and for which I have, um, considerable experience and ability. This is just the final one. In the long run now of appointments which I believe amount to cronyism, which I believe amount to jobs for those that basically pleased the mayor. I don't believe that in a democracy that this is appropriate. I don't believe, your worship, that you're denying me any position, starting with three years ago and I have given you nothing.
To now, can you stick to the point of this, this is the museum board appointment?
Yes, the, the point is that-
Further, it is not my appointment, it is the council's. So stick to this, please, and stay off, um, relevant subjects.
I believe that I should have a role on the Taga Museum Board. I applied for it three years ago. I've again applied for it today. I wish to let everybody here know that that is the case and that I believe the reason that you're now looking for somebody else is simply so that you don't have to hit me.
Councillor Vandis, you're at liberty to move that you be appointed and this council will decide it. These are not my appointments. But we do take advice from the bodies to which we are appointed as well. Now, are there any other speakers? Okay, I'm going to, we've got to put it, all those in favour, please say aye.
No recorder, please.
The next item on the agenda is appointments to outside organisations. Now, I'm aware that in the various iterations that of appointment, there were some, some things dropped uh, or omitted and then put back again and some mistakes made and they've been, uh, corrected, uh, as I understand it. And those affected have been consulted. Do you want to sum, could you summarise those? So what I'd like Sandy is for you to summarise the changes, uh, from what's on the paper.
From what's on the order paper. Um, so apologies, there were just some version control issues, um, in preparing this. And so, uh, let me just work through the Dunedin Public Art Gallery Society was omitted. And so, um, three people are required for that and the recommendation is they are councillors Wiley, Elder and Hawkins. Um, the Pukatai Residential Centre Liaison Committee, um, the required representative, that will be councillor Wiley, which differs from that on your order paper. And the Pukakura, um, Trust, um, is, uh, former councillor Pete is a trustee of that and has indicated, and the trusts have asked, that he continue for continuity. So there are the changes, apologies. Um, there's also, um, the Gasworks Museum, I believe, the Gasworks Museum Trust. And that will be councillor Newell. And there are a couple of others that have yet to, um, have appointments made. Yeah, and so-
Sorry, Sandy, not just checking, uh, the very first one you announced was that the DPAC. So I've been taking off that because the mayor said to me prior to the meeting that I was going to be put back on that.
No, you want it.
What was that?
Equations is different than, I'm just-
What I said was I was conscious that, that there was some indication, I think councillor Wiley mentioned to me, that it appeared to have disappeared. And so I found your name somewhere, but I went back to staff and said, can you resolve this because I don't know which version I'm meant to be dealing with.
And so there are still a couple of vacancies and, and would be a suggestion that we were able to work with the mayor following this meeting to fill those and bring a report back for- the Taga Setters Association, there are representative on Craigieburn, there's one other. That we could bring a report back to fill the remaining positions.
I wonder if the best thing to do would be to circulate by email those three positions.
We've done that already. And so it might be, if we've worked with the mayor to, um, fill the vacancies and report back to council.
So would someone like to move the recommendation on page two two seven, councillor Gary, second to councillor Hawkins?
No, 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 I have a question. Um, just whether or not it would be possible, uh, to make the external appointments to the Art Gallery Society Council at our meeting on Monday the twelfth. I haven't, I don't feel I've had enough time to consider that appointment. Similarly, if councillor Lord was happy to continue in that role, um, then that would be a problem solved. But I'd, I would need to consider that if that was to be the recommendation.
So just to clarify, you, if you, you, so your name's on it now.
Yeah, they, they haven't been, the first indication I've had of that was before the meeting, so.
And yours isn't?
Yeah, we did it for the last three years, Andrew, air and a night.
Right.
And I was just happy to continue with that if you want me to.
And if, if, if councillor Lord continues, you don't need to.
Yeah, that's fine.
Then, are you, if you're happy to do that, then that's what, that resolves it. Fuck that one. Okay. So, um, it's been moved. Has it been moved? Is there any further discussion? There being none, I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye. On to the meeting schedule for two thousand and seventeen. How's it being spoken? Did you move? Yes. Councillor Wiley, is there any discussion on that? I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye. Carried. Warrant cards for two thousand and fifteen, sixteen. Move councillor Wilson, second to councillor Steadman. Any discussion? I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye. Stand up. Give him four and a half hour maybe.